Mike, I'm able to make your time, so I'm going to call this work conversation and the board. We're running a few meetings late, but that's alright. Now, if we do give a sample case.
This one?
Not for this one.
Oh, for the original name?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. For the next maybe?
Okay. First on the agenda, we've got Tammy Hill, Florida.
Okay, she is not present due to have a cohort twice down here, so she will have to be delayed on that one.
Okay. Okay, what about this Vanessa Lance?
Vanessa Lance.
Vanessa Lance.
Her son Derrick.
Derrick.
Derrick, where did my name go right here?
Yeah, that's good.
My name is Derrick Lance. I'm here representing my mother, Vanessa Garnett Lance, for the appeal for the present use value tax on her property on Upersolier Creek. I don't know if you all have any documentation on that to look at?
It looks like this right here being. Yes, and then there will be a travel sheet from Irma that should be right there with it.
Okay, and what is, basically where my mother is in this particular property is it's disqualified for the present use value tax, so we receive the tax bill for it for current year and three previous years is nineteen thousand four hundred eighty-six dollars, so we were appealing that based on, apparently it was because that the forestry management plan was not kept up to date currently, and I guess to kind of just appeal to you, what has really happened to my mother in this, I don't know if you want me to give you the whole history on it or not, would you want me to do that?
Feel free, sir.
Okay. The plan, the original plan was written in nineteen ninety-four, and actually it was addressed to my grandmother. She was not the one who investigated the whole process. Her brother was the one who investigated it, and at that point in time, she was in the very early stages of dementia, so I'm sure she didn't really know and understand what was happening at that point in time. And the land was clear cut in nineteen ninety-three. There was two hundred ninety-eight acres there on Upersolier Creek, that's the property that we're talking about. And so, it was clear cut in ninety-three. The plan was written in ninety-four, and it had some very vague recommendations in there. Now, I don't know if you all have that plan or not. And to my mother's knowledge and all the documents that she got from this day, and she personally never, she never had a copy of that forestry management plan to look at. This is it, ninety-four, I'm looking. Did you look at this one or not? The plan you have there is the current plan.
Does that have possibly the original plan? No.
Do you need to look there?
Is her plan staying, right?
Well, we're in the process, right? I'm thinking and learning, you know, Ms. Phillips has, I know she's been very helpful to me personally in getting the PUP tax rate for some property that I have. This one has been made, when we received the bill in January, the original bill in January, I called Ms. Phillips and requested the original forestry management plan and the original PUP application for the property in order to gather documentation for this appeal. And she sent me the plans that were written in ninety-three and ninety-four. I got three plans, but two plans were not for this property. There was only one plan for this property. And so, at that point, I called to request a copy of the letter that she had given my mother in two thousand and four, saying that the plan didn't appear today, and also asked for a copy of the PUP application. And you correct me if I'm wrong, but that time you said there was no PUP applications and the original grant. And so, I mean, the PUP guidelines state very clearly that in order to get the application to be taxed, the application must be submitted and the forestry management plan must be submitted. So with no original application turned in, you know, the guidelines clearly state that that original application is a contract between the landowner and, you know, the county tax office, which, you know, binds the landowner to follow the management plan. But the application was never submitted, so really, I'm thinking technically, we never should have been in the PUP, this particular property never should have been in the PUP program historically, because the correct requirements were not satisfied for that. So that would be a concern that I had on it initially. But, you know, my mother will be very honest with us. She would want you to know that the main reason, if anything, was not done to keep up with this, it was simply the case that she was in constant care for her relatives. She was in constant care. In nineteen eighty-nine, her dad had a massive stroke. She was in constant care with him until he passed away in nineteen ninety-one. Again, my grandmother was, you know, headed into her diagnosis of dementia immediately at that point, so from ninety-one until two thousand and one, when she had to go to dementia consistently, my mother was caring for her. She would travel back and forth at least three days a week to travel her family. And on top of that, my dad had open heart surgery in ninety-eight, so he was, she was basically caring for him and her mother at the same time during all this time. So, you know, she would just plead that she just really, if that was the case for maintaining the forestry management plan, that she just was not able to, because she was in constant care. I'm currently retired. I've been retired for the past two years, and I'm retired to go back and help my parents, who are both unable to care for their property and that type of thing. So that's why I'm able to be here today, and that's why, you know, I was able to spend some time to learn about the present use value program by applying for work through mine for the property I have. And so, I'm comfortable with it now. I wish I could come more familiar with it and understood the whole process to be able to help her out at the two thousand and four point, but I wasn't. I was currently working, we do the chat business time. So, I guess that's the case, if I follow that latest sentence, to try to say that, you know, I just don't feel like we did, we should be held responsible for the nineteen thousand dollar tax bill, you know, based on those circumstances. But again, I would say since no application was ever filed, my grandmother didn't file it, you know, my mother, of course, didn't file it, and so, again, the requirements were not met. So if it was an error to give the PUP tax rate to this particular piece of property, I don't know, I mean, the landlord wouldn't be the one to go make that decision. So, I guess that's what we're thinking. And the forestry management plan has been written. You have the current forestry management plan. You can see that it's broken down into five areas, and the recommendation is that, general summary recommendation there, kind of reading all things on the first page of the letter, says area one, they recommend a harvest, area two recommend a harvest. We've already had a, hired a consultant forester and a contract had been written, and he's been up there and marked all the trees for harvest, and this week, I think it will go out on bid for someone to go up there and harvest those trees here within the next few months. So, I mean, here's a copy of that contract. See that? So, I mean, as far as carrying out the plan and doing what it needs to be done, I mean, that is very much in the process. We, Mr. Moss had also recommended that we contact Glenn Clarkson at the NCRS. We contacted him, and a contract was set up there for him to write the forestry management plan. We began that process in February. If you want to know how slow the federal government worked, where nearly seven months later, the next deal hasn't been approved. It was two thousand one hundred fourteen dollars. That was recommended for Mr. Moss to write the forestry management plan. That hasn't been approved yet. But in the meantime, I had been talking to Harold Phillips for the past three years about updating this plan, and he's been so busy that he hasn't been able to get to it. He was able to have a service force to do both the particular land and came in in just the past couple of months, and was able to write this plan. And so, in the meantime, dealing with NCRS, the North Carolina Forest Service was able to write the plan, so we're just going to see. So, I mean, at this point in time, again, I'm able to help my mother, but I'm able to help make sure that the plan is implemented and can keep all things documented. She was just really in a situation where she was not able to do that.
I can ask a question, please?
Yes, sir.
I apologize for coming late. I called to the court and get out of here. What was the term of the original plan? What was the term? Yeah. What, what, you want to see a copy of it? No, I just wanted to answer. How long was that? From what date, what date span?
Well, generally, on the forestry management plans.
Yours?
You'd like to update them every ten years.
Okay, yeah. This one, what was that original date and what was the term?
The original date of the plan that was written was nineteen ninety-four, May thirteenth, nineteen ninety-four.
Okay.
It was, again, addressed to my grandmother. Her brother was actually the one investigating this.
So have there been harvests during that period of time? Or have there been harvests on that plan?
The land was cleared in ninety-three.
In ninety-three?
Yes.
Okay, and what was the term for harvest when you took out the original plan in ninety-three?
What was the term as far as when it was on?
Yeah, there are, if I'm, am I wrong, I'm harvesting the wrong, different thing tree? But the thing is, is there not a term that you go and you have a plan, that that has to be done within a certain period of time?
Yeah, what it does in nineteen ninety-four, it has the recommendations of being spot checked by the US Forest Service, and so, within ten years, and nothing, when I mailed out that letter in two thousand and four, and I did not receive anything in response from the letter, they had been twenty years since that plan had been implemented. And that's why the discovery bill, they were rolled out of PUP. And what Mr. Lance is asking is this year, see present use value plans and the application have to be submitted by January thirty-first of each year. And so, for them to get it back in, Mr. Lance appealed February thirteenth, because I cannot put him back in it for this, put Vanessa's property back in it this year because of the deadline. Well, he, because I did not have a plan at all, a current plan, well, the new plan that he submitted was submitted June twelfth of this year, and therefore, I still could not put him back in for this year's, under this year's tax year. So, Mr. Lance wanted to appeal to the board.
Well, I'm wanting to understand what leeway do we have if that's the policy? Well, I have to just move on more important than that. So is June twelfth, June of this year?
Yes.
The June he read the plan. This is approximately six months out.
He is over the property tax division of the state of North Carolina.
Okay, this recommendation?
They have to be submitted by January thirty-first.
Let me see where we're at with that thing. Well, I do. I called Scott Casey, and while he also put the PUP on, the plan's maybe dispossessed or whatever. And when I initially talked to him in January, when we received the bill, you know, the nineteen thousand dollar bill, and I explained to him, you know, just what's been in the plan here, he said, if you get the PUP application in as far as the management plan, he said, he didn't see any reason why we shouldn't be able to.
Six months, six months. Was he realizing that in six months after the deadline?
No, that was in January when we first received. And like I said, we immediately, Ms. Phillips had recommended Mr. Moss to us before. We had been going through the North Carolina Forest Service to try to get the plan updated, and I initially started on that in two thousand and eleven by getting some property that I had in PUP property. When I went and talked to Mr. Phillips, I'm sure he, I'm not trying to say anything behind his back, I don't want to, I'll be glad to look him in the eye and tell him, you know, what I'm saying right now. But I asked him then, I said, will you be able to update my mother's, get the forestry management plan updated for my mother's property on Upersolier Creek? He knew exactly where it was, because he'd been up there, and he was the one who wrote the original plan. And he said, he said, yes, that he would be able to get to that. Of course, his schedule was very, very busy, and so, he was able to get a service forester who wrote this particular plan, who comes in once a week to write the plan. So, you know, I don't think, you know, in talking with him, it wasn't anything that he ignored intentionally or anything to update the plan. His schedule was just so busy in trying, you know, to get plans written for other people and that type of thing, that it didn't get to him until that point in time. You know, I know my mother had been in conversation with him back in two thousand and four, when she originally, when she received that letter, she did contact him and, you know, in hopes of getting the forestry management plan updated. So, you know, to say that it was just happened in the six months, the last six months, you know, I don't think would be correct to say that, because we had been trying to get it done for, since, I know personally, when I was able to work with this and understand the process, I started working on it in two thousand and eleven, when I started working on my property. And I essentially called him once a month to see what the process was. So, and my plan got submitted in January of this year. So, it took me two years to get mine done, and in the process, I was constantly asking for an update of this particular plan at the same time. So, you know, just to say that we started working on it in January this year would not be a correct statement.
Okay, alright. Well, I have to do some more homework on it, you know, and see what the leeway, the way is. I'm just going to work, you know, do everything I can.
Right. Well, that's what we can ask, we certainly appreciate that, and so, you know, I guess I can tell you now that we are implementing a plan. I know that's very important. That's the whole idea behind the PUP tax, is so that, you know, the land is being managed, and it's producing, if it's in forestry management, then it's producing timber for harvest. If it's in horticulture, then it's, you know, producing plants, that type of thing, or if it's in farm, then it's being farmed, and it's actually, the land is actually producing. And so, that's what we want to do with it.
Right.
And so, you know, again, you know, the problem happened was, the problem happened was just my mother being in that constant state of care for family. So I think, you know, to just, you know, kind of plead a little bit there to have her pay a nineteen thousand dollar bill essentially for caring for her family. I don't know, I just can't see.
I can see it through the area. But I'll have to do some more work on it, see how much leeway we have is for.
We certainly appreciate that.
I do, yeah. I apologize again for having plowed ground in progress by court guy.
No.
But I appreciate you doing that and helping.
Thank you very much.
Alright, we do have to have a response to him, and it'll be, it'll be a response. What, thirty days? Thirty days. I think, I know that much. And I want to tell you, PUPs are high profile. How many do we have in great hands? Three hundred? We have three hundred PUPs.
I just sent out a letter last Thursday. Took one property over, and I perused his timber last week, and I've got pictures, and I've explained to him that he has thirty days to notify me that he is doing a commercial logging operation, and it needs to be started within two months, because this timber is unringed.
Really?
Oh, I've got great pictures.
Well, you know, we've had this discussion about PUPs.
Yes.
I know that y'all can only, oh, there's somebody here, so that's a, that's a big challenge in that. Well, I appreciate you, sir. We're going to have it get.
Okay.
I'll assure you that.
Thank you.
That's what we're requesting. Thank you very much. Thank you. Have a good evening. You do the same. Let's see, has Lanny had an opportunity for it?
No, I do not know what that's going to happen.
Okay, that was it. That was it. She was still.
I have four two places today, so I'll say she's tapped in.
Well, what did I miss? Anything else? Alright. I don't like being late for your party. Does anybody else have any comment? Yes, ma'am?
I just have a question, since we have a few minutes. I saw that you had this on the discoveries and releases, and I know you told me one time, but could you tell us what discoveries and releases are, so people understand that?
Expert just left. Did you give an explanation?
Right now, they're going through the revaluation, and a discovery is a piece of property, either real value, real value or personal property that's discovered. Say I purchased a trap trader, or I purchased a single wide, and I put it on this property, but never told anybody. That is a discovery. Your release is, is if I sold that mobile home and never got it released, or the person I sold it to did not title it, it never got released from my name on my tax bill. So they send in proof that that can be released from those. Now, as far as property, with the math in, a lot of times, it gets mapped with their own acreage. And a lot of people go and have their property surveyed, so they'll bring that survey in, and if they do that, and they have been charged with more acreage than normal, then they'll release that. Vice versa. If they find out you have twenty acres of land versus ten acres that you're paying for, that would be a discovery.
How would they find out of new property? I mean, are there audits that are done? And how are you finding out? I can understand with the acreage, because if they survey it, then it's documented, but like, how are they finding out that someone purchased something and never reported it?
That's what we may wish.
Okay. So people actually go out to the property and look at what you've gotten?
Every piece of property in Red County is being cruised.
Yeah, and, you know, ideally, is that, you know, through the building inspections office, if you have an addition that comes under the beat, and then you have that addition done, then that term of honesty, or whatever else you want to call it, integrity or whatever, is that you have that project, and you come and say, here's what I've done, I want to do this addition, and if that addition qualifies for a change in property value, then we should be able to cross-reference it with that. And then, of course, with the GIs, Matt, I can't do a really good job. You know, you come to discover that there are things that aren't right with the calculated acreage. I'm going through that right now in another county with some property out. And so, yeah, that's where it is. And once that is, and that's why I guess this stack right here is getting like this. See, because with this evaluation, there've been a lot of things found, and it's brought up the issue, you know, with folks about, you know, why this happened. Well, it happens because, you know, it's been discovered and it wasn't recorded, and so.
Well, they don't permit when they do work.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That's a big issue right there.
And then, well, that's enough said there.
Thank you.
Did I answer the question?
Both of you did, thank you.
Okay, that's good. Alright, then. Can I answer where this came from? The, this, uh. Does everybody have a comment? This one here from Michael Brown?
That was from Irma.
This right here? Well, one of the bullets has been pointed out to me, is that applications for continued use should be made within sixty days of the transfer. I guess that means the property's been, can you transfer a PUP?
Transfer to the son.
Did you do that, a PUP? Next question. But this, is that transfer? Is this property a transfer?
No. It's still in the mother's name.
Okay, so that's not the issue here.
Is that the? Really? Is that in his home, like, is that in the property?
Says Garland.
Brink?
It says Garland. Vince?
Oh.
Vince Garland.
Vince Garland. So the brother's name was that perused her timber. What was the brother's name?
Gilbert Garland.
Actually, yeah. They are for that to third, and, you know, ten year, eighteen year. They've been there.
Okay. And then the second bullet, is everybody looking at the same thing? That's interesting. Untimed applications can be made through December thirty-one. Can be made through December thirty-one. They can be approved by the, what's it be, oh, the Board of Equilization Review, or county commissioners, whichever is in session. So now, it would be county commissioners, not the board, UNR. Does that mean the thirty-first of two thousand and thirteen?
It would be for like the year twenty thirteen. It would be the year twenty fourteen. You always stay a year. See, if you granted it, if you granted him to go in today, that would be for the year twenty thirteen. And we're going outside that, January one list for twenty-one, twenty fourteen, not twenty, yeah, so we're six months in, then twenty thirteen.
So what does this mean, that it's an untimed application?
Which I think that we'd question about that, because it is.
So what is that December thirty-one date?
No, it is a year. And is that December thirty-first of this year?
Was the application from two thousand and four, is that what she was saying?
You know, splitting plates with new, 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 or are we just talking about that? Or is, you know, we see them saying, it has to have a history.
Yes, I can understand what he said, was he's been trying to get this forestry management plan done since two thousand and eleven with the application, but it's been tied up with the US government, I get it completely, and that, you know, probably through a lack of understanding of how this thing was supposed to, the process was to occur, he missed deadlines earlier this year, and is asking for, for county commissioners to make.
and is asking for the four county commissioners to make an exception to his application and, and for an accepted application. How many more? Three hundred are the same shape? I don't know. I see it.
That one made out there, the note, of course, is, if you have not made all of the, if F M P obtained one, then I think that you can place them on a waiting list and accept the plan as the forestry service can produce them. Does that waiting list make them ineligible?
Uh, does it? Good question.
It just says, we strongly suggest that you have all catch-up and plans up to date. Of course, that's what this board has been trying to do.
And then goes on to say, forestry service showhead. And, and that's pretty much what they were saying, because he didn't, you know.
But I have to admit too, you know, regardless of this, he's gone through and followed the plan. You know?
Of course, plans can be obtained by contacting a consulting forester. These do have a charge for them. They, no, they went to Harold and Harold, yes, Harold supplied a forester for him.
Was that Mr. Moss you were talking about?
Yeah, it was on the second page of that. Jonathan McCall. And he said District Nine Service Forester. So they still District Nine, isn't it? So there would not be a charge, or there would be?
It's independent.
Being the District Nine, that's with our district, isn't it?
Let me kind of run through that while I've gone through them already. This plan has been in place since nineteen ninety four. Right? And it was cleared out nineteen ninety three. So it wouldn't be feasible that you would have five to plan with. See, I don't know of history. How long, that's why I was asking, what's the term? Was it a twenty-year plan? Was it a thirty-year plan? Because it's cleared out, it's gone, I'm raising the board, but I know some of you have kept. I didn't, I didn't have a clue. So.
They just own the property right now, where it's law. Get them over back to the script.
Well, why do you have P U B on? Well, now, in the plan, we talked about two areas that were ready for law.
And I thought it did grow.
They had contracts for those. But now the other section, it was clear that it would be ready.
Free water growth.
And that. Uh, I think that you're right, Mr. Stevens. I think we're gonna have to get some more facts on this. Well, it has to have a history. We've got to get the history out and see what, what's what. Because, you know, as Mr. Lance presented, you know, he's, he's unsure about the history, whether there was even ever been a racial application. And that, you know, not, not knowing what that is. He sounds like he was trying to do things right, but he's, you know, sort of being held up in this forest spring management plan. I think you're right. Well, this is a document that I see is just gonna fall. This doesn't sound. So area one, fifty-five acres. Area two, twenty acres. Where are you with that? Then there's area five, which is twenty-three acres. And it goes on here, it talks about the base age being fifty years.
They went in there and they low. It was there. Next, we're all good there. What's left, that bird, channel, channel three, this is where it was.
Do you see any of the diameter of seven acres? Do you see any of the, the base age that you're looking for?
Yeah, I can see that. Channel three, it's like, it takes a long time for that.
Yeah.
Really a long time.
So that could be my recommendations. We have more history on it. We need to get six to thirty days. And how do you change the, how do you change? So, okay. Thanks for that. All right. Anything else we need to amend where I keep up with mine? Uh, the, of course, I'll be talking about this a little bit later on. But the senior centers come along and the, there's a bit of requests to come forward with this board for the site conditions. One of them being the, currently right now, there's a large drainage ditch in behind. It's a drawn up the site. And we've got extra dirt up there. And in the discussion of saving the height of the building, and even the architect, all agree that it would be a good idea to basically put a pipe in there and then use some of that extra dirt to level that off. That way we can go to areas easier mode. We can drain our gutters into that, drain this ditch, it's gonna flow out. And it's gonna have the overall look of the site. Tremendous. Instead of a swell ditch? Instead of a swell ditch there, put in the pipe. You know, we can have the gutter drains into that pipe. It's gonna go in, you know, the main drain, and our body closer to the roof. And it would help the site, you know, last eight months, all of that stuff as it goes forward. I don't have a price on that. I don't see it being a high, we can also, you know, roll that four inch, a hundred feet of that four inch black pipe to nine hundred point dollars. So it's not like it's major experience in a dirt landing. They get carried in the waters. And shit, and shit. Might as well get our son.
Eight, eight, the red, the old eight inch.
Sure, or an eight inch square.
The red, the old track, the old, the old. There's a little more.
And they don't bring that back? Uh, I'm gonna bring that up kind of forward to consider. But that is something that they asked us to look into. There was another thing on the agenda, it'll be out of number nine. It said bid for new signs in your center, but there's not been any formal bid or anything like that. So that committee, I was not at the last meeting, but, but they had had some discussions going back and forth in regards to having a rock sign similar to what is up to transit in front of that building instead of sign that's mounted on the, on the side of the building. And, but I, I talked to the contractor today. I don't have enough information for the, for the board as far as any, you know, idea of price or whether we want to go out and get actual bids for that. The, we run through the contractor. So we would need to, you know, it basically be a discretional bid because it would be a considered change order.
I'm gonna go and save thirty thousand dollars. I want to get you the.
Yeah, just to be up to that.
She was swishing her eyes. Thank you. Sorry.
It's, and, and the appliances are coming in. They're, they're very, very nice, the ones that came in. They've had a big deal of those, and we've sent those back. You don't have the place to send our appliances. So all that, all those appliances are stored in, you know, in safe places.
I will say that includes pots, pans, wares, cans, bowls, stainless steel spoons, forks. I ordered all kinds of pots, the lids, the steaks, pans, anything I could get my hands on and still come under thirty, say thirty thousand.
Wow, that's a lot.
The Lord was smiling.
Absolutely. Smile. Well, um, did I, I couldn't make immediately, but isn't there one in two o'clock today? There is. The reception onsite? It was onsite. So roofs up, children on, windows are sitting there. But there's gonna be some other discussion on sidewalks. So we're met up there. The current draw on that sidewalk shows an eight-foot sidewalk in the front, which is a very large sidewalk. We want to be able to have some consideration to be able to reduce that to six feet in front of the door. Because what that's gonna do is it's gonna give us a better turning radius coming through the covered driveway. The other two feet's gonna make a lot of difference. And also, as it goes out to the end where it matches up on the sidewalks coming off the side of the building, there are five feet. So we would want to have a six-foot sidewalk that would cover the, handing the ADA entrance. And then have that sidewalk step back five feet to match what's coming down the side. It's a mistake thing. It's gonna save a little bit of concrete, but I imagine that's what's gonna, you know, make. Are they still getting the ramp, the ramp entrance for the, for the park? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. The ramp entrance will be there. There'll be plenty of white left to, to carry that. But, but the building is coming together. It's looking really, really good. And I will be giving you a, you know, the stats report tonight. But I wanted you to know ahead of time about that drainage ditch in the back and, and the sidewalk. It's a, you know, it's, it's a good change. It's, you know, the thing that obviously costs anything would be whatever that pipe cost to go back. You know, the actual was covered, that hinge, but it would be a substantial. That's not gonna be able to pay it? No, sir. Not, not, it would not be paid. It's a grassy area. It's gonna make it easier on our managers to vote. And it's quite a large ditch right now. I think that's a mistake thing. You know, the future, well, it's happening on that block. It's going right up to. Uh, let me answer this. I know that under the discussion I've fourteen, I know we're discussing right now, but we're talking about the, set the third one down, the recent neighbors and board appointment. Reimbursement, I think. Yeah, second one. Board appointment, three appointments to the region aid advisory council, that's aging rules. We have some prospects for that. Yes, sir. And? Uh, we've got a lot of timber attempted, and you can press. Are they gonna?
Just out there, yes. That's in the place that you can't take under permission, we'll use from this part.
Fucking bird.
Yes.
I know what I've been. She very rarely misses. The lessons went off and never.
We can't put another permissioner because that would constitute being, so. I was, I've been on it for a year, I used to have a mission.
Well, I, I tried to get to everyone that can, but it just seems like the dating games.
Yeah. Alation was very pleased with it. She's been on it before, too.
All right, so that's, that's the only thing I'm concerned about, because we were, we put that off so we could find her.
Yeah.
And those three, I wrote by and said, if we. I'm sorry, I broke to Kim and Alation, but now I have not talked to you. I don't know.
I was divorced.
You were divorced.
I don't care. No, I'm glad they started. I don't think he would have a problem. It's just an alternate. You know, on a day that maybe she could go, they're usually, I think it was a conceal or whatever. Right over here.
A lot of times, just whatever. It's not a, it's a big, not a trouble.
And she's involved through the.
Lexington.
So, adult, adult making.
That makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
We'll see that. Oh, can we get hold of the family and see what she wants to do? That's on the agenda. We have ten minutes.
Have you, have you broke? Did you end?